Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for September 8, 2015. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Don Graham from Lakeside United Methodist Church to lead us in prayer, and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
I invite you to prepare yourself to address your understanding of a divine being. Holy One, we gather ourselves together this evening with a task that's enormous before us, the task of governance of your people. We know, Lord, that you have placed within the hearts of each human being a great capacity for good and also a great capacity for evil, and all of us are somewhere along that continuum. I pray that those who are closer to that capacity for great good might be the ones who dominate the conversation tonight, that in everything that is discussed today, the outcome is the very best possible outcome that can be for the people who live in your city, the city of Muskegon. All of these things, Lord, we thank you for in the powerful name of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galeran?
Here.
Commissioner Hood, absent.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German, absent. Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Here.
Thank you. Before we proceed, we have some honors and awards, don't we, Madam Hurst?
Yes, we do.
We do. I think a big part of building a beautiful city, of course, is our relationships with each other as neighbors, but it's also that additional bit of effort that we may put forth to exercise our green thumbs and bring forth some beautiful color and sense here on God's great green earth. So tonight, we want to recognize those participating in the Muskegon Neighborhood Association's beautification and awards program. So what I'll do is I'll begin by calling out names, and if you're here, please come up, and if you're not here, well, you won't be coming up, will you? Brilliant, isn't it? Some of you know me very well. You're going to tell my mom, aren't you? Yes, you will. Okay. Are Benny and Landy Walters here this evening? They received honorable mention. I know Nancy's here, Nancy Sanders. Come on up, Nancy. Nancy's my neighbor in the NIMs Neighborhood Association.
He's a great neighbor.
Why, thank you.
And thanks so much for that beautiful one.
Okay? Got it. Is Crystal Vina here? Teresa Hicks? Clementine Zot?
What neighborhood are you in, Clementine?
Muskegon.
Which one?
Between Orchard and Hamptree.
Okay, that would be between Orchard and Hamptree. Who's that?
That's Angel, I think.
Angel, Mm-hmm. Well, Ms. Zot has honorable mention. We want to thank her for helping to add the beauty.
Sheila Porter? How about Lisa Conklin? Tim Mansfield? William Schaefer? Phil?
Phil?
Oh!
How are you? Great to see you here. Honorable mention for the beauty you bring to Lakeside there up the hill. You got it? I will stop and buy more, huh? Okay. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it, buddy.
Diana Springstead? Wayne Vanderwell? We got one!
Thank you, Wayne.
It'd be nice if you'd tell the addresses.
I know, I know. But what neighborhood are you associated with?
I live on Green Street in Muskegon.
Okay.
Sheldon.
Okay, Sheldon. That's right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, very good.
Well, you're right. We'll do that next year. We'll put the addresses on these. But then maybe some people don't want to be found. John and April Thompson. Hi, April.
Hi.
Can we keep John in your prayers, please? Okay? So, John and April, beautiful home there in the historic district on Jefferson. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And give them a big kiss, will you, would you?
Kelvin and Susan Terrell? Paul Casperson? Beth and Kevin Cantola? Peggy Taslar? The guy you're dating can come with you. Hi, Frost.
Hey, Peggy's also in the NIMs neighborhood, so I'm stronger than you.
We're neighbors.
Yeah. Okay.
And now for most unique, and you are, Martha Bottomley from Glenside.
I knew you were going to say that.
I know. There you go. Hey, thank you. Seriously. Larry, your mom's here.
I do think that you mentioned the neighborhood, you have everyone else.
Oh, didn't I say Glenside?
No.
No.
Glenside neighborhood.
You're welcome.
I was not on the judging committee.
Neither was I.
Third place, Dave Heiser. Second place, Greg and Penny Rusick. First place, Patricia Helm. And those all come with checks. No, not really. Certificate of Recognition, the cheese lady on Terror Street downtown. 297 Clay, the old Y. St. Paul's Episcopal Church, most unique. Well, welcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
So it's great to see you.
Good to see you, Steve. Thank you very much.
And I don't remember any of my sonnets, but Hackley Public Library, third place. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
We have the second place certificate of recognition for Shelly House of Flowers.
I think you're on edge.
Yeah, I know it. I know it. And first place certificate of recognition, somebody else with a little edge, Wasserman's Flower Shop. And that's it. But to all of you here, thank you so much for that extra effort in helping to make the neighborhood and the community a bit more special, and thanks so many of you for your friendships and being good friends. Thank you very much. Take care, everybody.
Steve, I'd love to stay, but, you know.
Could you go run across, get me a sandwich? Okay.
They go back a long way there.
Oh, yeah. It's always good to see you.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the August 25th, 2015 City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of minutes. Approval of the use and maintenance of city-owned property at 58 East Grand Avenue, planning economic development. Summary request to approve the use and maintenance of the city-owned property located at 58 East Grand Avenue for Community Garden. The property is unbuildable, and the city would retain the right to sell the property with the Community Garden members having time to remove the garden prior to any sales. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution and maintenance agreement.
That's it? Who wants to make a motion?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second? It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaasipiga to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings.
Request to conduct a public hearing of the Community Neighborhood Services Department Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR, 2014, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request to conduct a public hearing of the 2014-2015 CAPR projects funded through CDBG and home allocations to the City of Muskegon Community Neighborhood Services Department. Staff recommendation to submit the 2014-2015 CAPR, including any public comments received during the 30-day comment period ending September 22nd, 2015.
There you go. We've all received a copy of the CAPR. Any questions for Anita Bailey on that at this juncture? Otherwise, we're just setting the schedule for this to be made public and available.
And public comments.
And public comments, too, tonight.
Tonight.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the issue of the 2014-2015 CAPR? This is for the projects funded through CDBG and home allocations to the City of Muskegon. Vice Mayor?
Seeing no one, I would move that we close the public hearing and submit the 2014-2015 CAPR, including any public comments received during the 30-day comment period ending September 22nd, 2015.
Second? It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to submit the 2014-2015 CAPR, including any public comments received during the 30-day comment period ending September 22nd, 2015. Any comments? Vice Mayor?
Just one, I think it's worth mentioning that once a year, once again this year, Mrs. Bailey has done an excellent job with this program and administering it for not just the city of Muskegon, but for our neighbors to the south and northern shores, and the numbers reflect that. So I think a thank you and a well-done are well-deserved.
We love you, Anita. You're welcome. Roll call, please.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business.
Presentation by General Capital Group, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, General Capital Group will be making a presentation on the site that they are considering for their new mixed-use development project. They will be requesting a pilot for the project in the near future. Staff recommendation, none.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Rue Baker-Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I just wanted to start out before I introduce General Capital and Josh Hafrin, who you've seen before. Normally, we would have put this on your work session, but you didn't have work session this month, so we're asking for your patience in the presentation now because, as usual, with these issues, we're usually under a timing situation. So we wanted to get it before you rather than wait until October. So they are going to do a short presentation. They know it needs to be short, right? Short and to the point. But we have, General Capital, as you know, came to us before on the Clay Street property. It had gone to commission, they were making some changes, but then found out from MISTDA that that site was not favorable to them being that far from the center of town. So they kind of went back to work and looked at another site, which you have before you in your packet, which I refer to as the old parking ramp site downtown. I probably shouldn't do that anymore at date, some of us. But it's owned by presses now. We sold it to them. And we have worked closely. I really appreciate Josh. He's been much better to work with than some of the folks that we have come in, especially when they're looking for pilots. I think he understands where we're coming from as a city. He understands that we're looking for more than just affordable housing if they're going to introduce that. We're looking for several other elements as well, and he's listened to us, and he's come back to us, and he can tell you more about the specifics, but really looking at commercial on the first floor of this development, which I think is important, and also looking closely at the Form-Based Code, which I think I have the nod from our zoning administrator as of today. It looks like everything fits with what our Form-Based Code requires, so he's followed that in terms of what the building will look like. But I will let them give their presentation, and then this is the time for any questions, concerns, if they feel like there's a favorable, if you have suggestions and things you want to change, this is the time to do it, if you want to ask them to do that. And so they will know if you're looking relatively favorably about going forward. At that time, we'd come, we'd develop a contract with our attorney for the actual pilot agreement and come back to you with that. So we're not asking for any approvals tonight, more of a nod that, yes, we're in agreement with this. Go ahead and start working on the contract for the pilot. So with that, I will introduce Josh and let you take it from there with General Capital, and I'll be around if you have any questions with me afterwards.
Very good. Evening, Josh. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for the nice introduction, Kathy, and thank you all for your time tonight. I'll hopefully be very brief in introducing the project and explaining, for those who weren't here last time, who we are and what we're trying to do. I work for a company called General Capital Group. We're a small developer out of Fox Point, Wisconsin, which is Milwaukee. We have an office in Chicago, which I work out of. We're a, right now, we have two sides, commercial development as well as a housing side. We've developed over 1,600 units, and we branded the project that we're working on today as a Berkshire project, which is a senior living community. We've established five or six of those in Wisconsin under the Berkshire brand, and this project would be called the Berkshire of Muskegon. The group, a little history on the group, it's a 20-year-old group founded by two brothers, Michael and David Weiss. We're about 20 employees. We've done 20 types of deals that we're proposing to do here tonight. That's 20 tax credit deals as a GP, fee developer, or as to General Capital. We've also completed over 50 commercial developments to date. The site that we have under contract today, as Kathy mentioned, is the site at First and Clay, which Kathy referred to and used to be the old parking ramp, which I understand has been controlled by the presses since about 2007, and soon after, they tore down the parking ramp, and I understand has since sat vacant. What we're proposing to build is a mixed-use building. It will be senior, the majority, the vast majority of the building will be senior independent living. It'll be a mixed-income project. We'll have seniors of various income levels living in the project. And then the commercial component of the project that Kathy mentioned, well, let me go first on some of the building details. The building will be three stories. It'll comprise 79 independent apartments, 56 one-bedrooms and 23 two-bedrooms. There'll be underground parking for the residents as well as surface parking. There's a rendering or a schematic of the building on the next page. We designed, as Kathy mentioned, with, working closely with Mike Franzick, to follow the Form-Based Code. We have modified the plans a couple times to make sure we hit the Form-Based Code, and I brought Ryan Boucher from our architecture firm to discuss any detailed questions you might have on the layout of the building itself. We think the building is of high quality, and we listened to you last time. You had comments on our first proposal, First and Clay, I mean, at 31 East Clay. We think we've designed a very aesthetically pleasing building that will fit nicely into the downtown as well as add to the downtown. It's going to be, have a high-quality exterior. It will not be vinyl-sided. There'll be brick, it'll be brick along with cement product siding, which is a long-term product that's, you know, life expectancy of the cement board siding is 50 years and the brick is longer. We have, I think one of the, Kathy mentioned that we wanted to work, or try to meet the needs of downtown Muskegon, and one way we're trying to do that is we've added a commercial component to the building. The commercial component is about 5,700 square feet. We haven't entirely configured the space, but a large portion of that, we're talking with Tanglewood, who wants to, who has expressed strong interest in establishing a satellite office in downtown, and this facility will serve both the tenants in our building as well as other residents of Muskegon from the office. In this space, they're talking about providing classes as well as some case management, as well as, you know, senior activities. Skipping, you know, skipping a couple pages, I mentioned the commercial space. The other commercial space will be devoted to about 1,800 square feet, will be devoted to, if you will call it spec space for now, and that will be available to, we'll build it to a white box standard, and that will be available to lease once it's built out to commercial or retail tenants who desire space in downtown. Other features of the building that are more geared towards the tenant, tenants who live in the building, is that there will be significant common area, including, you know, large community room, an exercise room, library, business center. There'll be outdoor areas for the tenants to relax or to sit, and there will also be an onsite manager and leasing office. We think the project benefits downtown Muskegon in a couple ways. It's a significant investment on a vacant site downtown. We think, again, it's an attractive building. We think it'll add to the downtown area. We think, as Kathy mentioned earlier, we worked, I think we're the first project to work with the Form-Based Code to hit all the necessary criteria to gain approval from a Form-Based Code perspective, and we're excited that we're able to work with the planning department on that. I think, you know, what we're seeking tonight, or let me explain the building itself, or the unit structure in the building. About 47 of the units will be designated for people making up to 60% of the area median income, which is, for people in Muskegon, it's a one-person family making about $20,000, $23,000 a year or less. 40% of the units will be for, I mean, the 26 of the units will be for people making 40% of the area median income or less, and 6 of the units will be for people making 30% of the area median income or less. A lot of this is driven by MISTDA point scoring in order to get the credits. You spread the units towards different incomes to create a mixed-income environment. The pilot we're seeking, and this is obviously all negotiable, is we're asking for a pilot of about $22,195 a year. That's about a 5% pilot. I think we had discussions last time that 4% of that would be a pilot, the other 1% would be a municipal service agreement type feature. My understanding from the current owner is the current taxes on the property are about $4,000 a year. Obviously, this would be an increase over what currently exists on the project. That's my brief presentation. I'd like to add one comment. It's unfortunate we couldn't move forward with the site at 31 East Clay. We thought it was a good site. We know the city thought it was a suitable site as well for this type of project. Unfortunately, as Kathy mentioned earlier, MISTDA did not approve the site. I'm happy to say that MISTDA has not, and let me be clear, has not allocated credits or has not said one way or another whether they'll give this credit, this project credits, but we do have preliminary site approval for this site. So the issue that shot the project down last time, at least from MISTDA's point of view, has been cleared.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Hafrin? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, I was particularly blunt in my critique of the previous proposal, and I will say thank you for addressing the concerns that were expressed by this body and at the planning commission level. Quite honestly, this is exactly the type of building I've always envisioned for this site, so I think from that aspect, you've hit the ball out of the park. So kudos on that. I particularly like the open street features with the terraces, which are somewhat reminiscent of the Hamilton Apartment Building, and integrating the commercial space and hopefully bringing some of those Tanglewood services here. We do have a number of senior complexes here, and while the, there's a free bus to the Walmart on a weekly basis for all of them, getting to the senior services center is not always quite so easy, so I think that would be outstanding. You know, I'm going to have a couple of nits to pick, and I would like to see at least some, even if it's just a handful of market-rate units, to truly economically integrate the building. I understand the mix, but if we could just add a couple in there and figure out a way to make that work, I think this would make it an even better project. And then obviously, staff will negotiate what an acceptable payment in lieu of taxes agreement might look like. But I just want to thank you for coming back with what I think is a much, much better project and a much better location. I think this will serve not only its tenants well, but be a good complement to St. Mary's Church across the street and the heritage townhomes that have gone up and 297, all three of which have been long-term tenants, and I think they've been somewhat anxious about what might happen with this property, and I think they'll be very pleased with this. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything, Commissioner Johnson?
I too want to thank you for coming back here and not being discouraged by inability to move forward previously because of blockades from MISTDA. So I do appreciate you guys have returned with. So I do appreciate you guys have returned with an updated proposal and a new spot. Mixed use is definitely the way we want to go with that development in our downtown. And I appreciate the addition of the commercial space as the Vice Mayor indicated. I, I would like to see a bit more commercial space, particularly on the other corner of First and Webster, so that we can help foster further commercial development going in that direction as well. We've got Huntington Bank right across the street. We've got another bank down the street. We have vacant spaces along that corridor going towards terrace between Muskegon and Webster. And it would be nice to help foster further commercial development that direction. So if possible, it would be nice to see some commercial space on that corner of First and Webster. However, I would say commercial space on Clay, the corner of Clay and First is the ideal corner. If we can get it on both corners, that'd be phenomenal. I too would like to see market-rate apartments, if possible, in this project. We definitely have a need for market-rate apartments down there. And it would improve the, the economic diversity of that, that project. Had you considered adding a fourth floor at all or a partial fourth floor such as on the Webster side? Just the, the front half of, of the Webster side where the elevator is contained? Potentially doing a fourth floor there to add some additional units? I know the, the previous project that you had considered Thirty-One East Clay had eighty-seven proposed units and we're looking at seventy-nine now. Was there any consideration of adding a fourth floor, whether in totality or a portion of the fourth floor, to get some more units out of the project?
What, there was consideration. What we, what we, we had another mark, the first time we came to with the, the proposal was for an eighty-seven unit building. We had a market study done, we had a market study done that's overseen by MISTDA and controlled by MISTDA. That market study came back and I believe it came back and said we could only do sixty-four units.
Right.
So if we, if we were, if we were gonna, i- if we were gonna go ahead with, with Thirty-First East Clay, it would, it would ultimately, MISTDA would've said you could only do sixty-four units. We redid the market study with new demographics, the, the years, another year. And then there was new data. So the, this time around, we're allowed to do seventy-nine units. So a seventy-nine unit project fits within a third sto- a three-story building here. And as a result, we didn't want to add a, a fourth, a fourth floor. Part of that consideration is that, the cost. And with seventy-nine units, building a, 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 a compact, but yet still, you know, desirable building is, is, works in our favor on, on several levels. So that's, that's the reason there's no fourth floor. It, with, with respect to your question on market-rate units and commercial on First and Webster across from Huntington, it's, it's really, when we're, when we're, these, these projects are, in many ways, a lot, all projects are putting together pieces of a puzzle. And when we, when we're doing this type of project, there are only certain costs that are eligible to receive the credits. So that the more commercial we add, the more market rate, or, or adding market-rate units takes away from the type of funding we're seeking from MISTDA. So as a result, if you, if, when you add too much or add, cross a line, your, your project becomes unfeasible. And won't, it won't be funded by MISTDA and also further down the road, wouldn't be funded by investors buying the, the, the type of financing we're using. So, you know, those are all excellent points that we can, we can take a look at. But it's, it's, again, it's, it's really tight, tough to fit all these, all these pieces into the puzzle. I will say, you know, as a point to your First and Webster, having commercial there, there will be some commercial-like aspect to that corner because that's where the leasing office will be. So there will be a more, you know, not truly commercial, but more a commercial-like use at that corner.
Streetscape front, front of there. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure enough.
Continue. Completely understandable with regard to not wanting to put commercial space there because you don't want to upset your ratio of units that you have to qualify for low-income tax, housing tax credit. I would encourage you to still consider the possibility of adding a fourth floor, at least on, on the Webster portion of it with elevator, and having that market-rate apartments. That shouldn't, I suspect, wouldn't interfere with your, your number of units qualifying for the credits. So you'd still be able to get the expected credits that you, that you're looking for. And I think you'd have no problem finding occupancy for those market-rate apartments as well. There, there's certainly a demand here. And if you wouldn't mind sharing that updated study, because I did review that, the previous analysis that had been done by Shaw Research and Consulting, that was published in February. And so if you do have an, an updated study or analysis, if you could share that with us, that would be welcomed. And in that analysis, it had included a recommendation that the Berkshire Muskegon project be adjusted to include central air conditioning, dishwashers and ceiling fans. Those were amenities that the analysis had found were prominent throughout other senior homes and particularly the vast majority of senior homes that qualified, that were low-income housing tax credit projects. Does this project that you're, you're proposing include those amenities now?
It, it includes central air, which will be, which means, which is really nice for the building because there will be no, no access for the wall, wall units of central, or AC, sleeve AC units. So there is central air. Ceiling fans is something we will consider. Typically with, when we include central air, we don't include ceiling fans. And then dishwashers is something we're still looking at.
Okay. I may have a few more questions. I'm gonna collect.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yeah, I think you've done a great job on the design of the building, the amenities that you've added, including some retail tying in with Tanglewood. I like all of those things. And I like the design of the first building that was presented to us and the location. I have, I, I expressed some caution about my thinking on the location of this. I look at this piece of property as being future, potential, higher income, more retail, whatever it is. But it's, and, and MISTDA said they wanted it closer to downtown. Well, you know, you got the Gary Post right across the street and John Rooks over here. And they've made some big investments at, at market rate. And I just feel that this would, would bring it down. And I, I think that's too valuable a piece of property for this use. I love the looks to the building. It would clean up the city. Rennescent down at the end, other end of Clay is a beautiful building and it's certainly cleaned up that block. But I just think there's too much potential for that piece of property to be used for the low-income housing.
I, I know that, you know, and I, you know, it's, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I know the presses have held on to the, the piece of land for quite a number of years. And I, my, my understanding is that there has, you know, I'm not saying, you know, there's potential something to happen in the future. But there's just, has been little activity on, on the site to date.
I understand. We have a lot of parcels that are like that. I can remember when we were back on the planning commission, when every woman's place wanted to expand their facility towards the woods. And there was a lot of discussion on that, that that was one of the few last residential parcels that we had in that area. And at that time, I had a hard time understanding that. Nothing has happened there either. But I think we have to be prepared, watch us go. I think it's gonna happen. I think it's happening. And if we take up too much of the parcels that are valuable for this, I think we hurt ourselves a long time. Once you're approved, you're there forever.
We, we, we knock on wood, we will be there forever if we're approved.
So I have concern.
Vice President of Muskegon.
I guess we're all giving our opinions here. Personally, I think the site is an improvement over the last site. I honestly agreed with MISTDA's assessment. And I think I've mentioned that a couple of times, the last time, that I thought that was way too far from the center of town. This is much more walkable. And if, if, I think development needs to come from the center of town and it will come as the market brings it. And I, I, I think that the increased activity in that area will encourage other people to build around it. And there's still are other possibilities for that, so I'm okay with that. I guess my main concerns at the, so I don't really have any issues with the site or the idea. My main concerns are with the pilot. I just, hopefully we'll stick, and this is as much for Kathy as anyone else, that we'll stick with the agreement we had last time. It seems like we went back and forth on that, so I'd like it to be close to that. And then my final concern has to do with the timing of the project. I just would like to see the commercial space, make sure that the commercial space is completed. I know we've had a couple of times when we've had developers with low-income housing tax credits complete the subsidized units and then not complete something else that was mentioned in the lead-up to the approval for the pilot. So some way to make sure that, that is incorporated because I would not want to see a part of the site be vacant. And I do think that what we're all getting at is the mix of, and it has to do with that ratio of market rate, commercial space or market rate housing units. I think, you know, we would all like as much as possible. Obviously, we understand. So I don't really know if we have a priority of whether we would rather see commercial space or housing space. You know, probably the space in the project or the investment in the project is a static amount of money. So, you know, I guess, I like the commercial in that area, so I think that's probably a good way to go.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. On that point, I mean, if it, you know, if it was an either-or situation, given that this is seniors-only, fifty-five and older, I would much rather see the commercial space if it has to be that or. I mean, I'd love to have both. But if it's the commercial space or the market-rate apartments, I think the commercial space on that corridor is more important. But I, I also wanted just to say, you know, I would maybe tend to agree with Commissioner Turquist with, except we have a lot to fill and in some pretty strategic locations. And I would think for higher-end residential, particularly if you're going up a little bit, those lots closer to easily achieving a Waterville or Waterview probably would be more attractive to developers for those kind of projects. And there are lots between Clay and Shoreline Drive and between Shoreline Drive and the water where that could be achievable. And to the immediate south, on the other side of Webster, there are literally two vacant blocks. And I think, you know, filling this, with this kind of project in the heart of the city, bringing more residents and more activity, more people walking around downtown is well worth the, the trade-offs that were being asked. And people know I'm really leery about how much income-limited housing we already have. But I think this is the right type of project. It's in the right location. I've already made my comments about the mix. But I, I'd like to see us be able to work out those last few details and I'd like to see this project go. I think it will open eyes to other developers of what's possible in Muskegon. Particularly the, the combination of retail, commercial and residential into one space.
You had some follow-ups, Commissioner Johnson, to wrap up?
Yeah, if you could explain to, to the commission and to, to the public how you arrived at your ratios of, you know, thirty percent area median income, forty percent area income, and sixty percent, sixty percent area median income? The percentage that's gonna be, units that's gonna qualify for each of those? And then also how you arrived at thirty, forty, sixty? If that's a, a state stipulation, if those are the numbers you have to work with? And then you adjust how many units, you know, for each of those? So if you just give some, some additional insights into, into that?
Sure. Um, the, the, the breakout of the AMI units and the number of units at each level is, is, is based on scoring. And in order to get the credits, you have, we're competing against other projects across the state. It's probably three to four projects that everyone gets allocated. Part of the scoring is designating units for lower-income people. And then, and then you can score a maximum number of points in that category. In order to get credits, we feel like we need to max out the points in that category to be competitive across the state. And so that, the, the breakout that I read before just hap- is, is happens to be the breakout that matches or lines up with MISTDA's scoring to max out the points in those categories. But, but, but to your, to your, to your point though about the, the project itself, you know, to, to the project itself is that these are not, and I think everyone's, for the most part, that these are not, it's not public housing. It's not Section Eight. These are all people who will be paying rent to, based on their, based on their income. If we had, if we didn't have scoring criteria for MISTDA, we would most likely do a hundred percent, sixty percent units because that's more rent. And we could, you know, increase the loan size which would take some of the, some of the pressure off the deal economically. So that, so that these people are, you know, are, are seniors who, who are living on limited incomes, who we will be providing, you know, when we do these projects, possibly seniors will come back to us and say, "This is the nicest place I've ever lived in." "It's a brand-new building. It's a brand-new appliances, a brand-new, you know, carpet, walls, amenities, computer room, the, the libraries." You know, a location that's, you know, fantastic for, for accessing downtown Muskegon. So it's, it's, it's not, I just want to make that point, that these are all people who have income and who are going to be paying rent. The other thing I mentioned is that, you know, that this, it was touched upon by, by some of these, that this, we, we do see these projects as catalytic, that, that you build it and then other things, you know, knock on wood will come. And, and, and this fills in a, a space in downtown that has been vacant for, for years that we think would be, would be additive to the community in the sense that we're, but we're also adding the, the Tanglewood office as well as the, the commercial space. And we were, you know, and we're, we're happy to, to add in provisions that into, into agreement with the city that this space will be completed for the, for the pilots to defend.
I absolutely agree that it'd be a catalyst for further development there. And getting more seniors there as well will help create that critical mass of businesses catering to seniors. And, you know, I hear from seniors in other townhouses around there and, and buildings that they don't have enough things to do. And so that, I think that would help, especially if you get the, the Tanglewood office in there. I think that'd be a great benefit to the new residents in Berkshire Muskegon, but also our senior homes in the surrounding area. Sounded like you almost intimated that it's almost a sure deal that that's gonna happen? No, it's far from it? Okay.
No, 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 I would say it's far from it. I, I, I would say that, that we've spoken to, to the Tanglewood people several times. And they've expressed very, very strong interest in, in, in setting office. We haven't worked out the details. But we are, we are willing to, to, to work with them. And, you know, as far as they charge nominal rent for them to be there. And, you know, some rents. And then they recover, you know, utilities and real estate taxes and some nominal rent to the, to, to pay, to help fund, fund the space. But we certainly don't have a deal struck with them yet.
Okay, okay. Well, I wish you luck in, in securing that deal. And not to, to follow up and not to delve too deeply into the minutia, but we didn't have the floor plans for the second and third floor. I'm wondering, I presume that, that the library and the computer center and the exercise room, that's gonna be in the same space as the commercial space, but on the second and third floor? Or where, what's gonna be going in the, the corner space on the second and third floors? Is that just?
Brian, Brian, maybe you can speak to that.
Sure.
Good evening. Brian Boucher, over to you. I'm surprised the second, third floor was not part of the package. It was part of the submission documents. But essentially, you're talking about the corner of First Street?
Yeah.
That is a continuation of residential units of all sorts. Commercial is limited to the, the first floor. And the community spaces that you're speaking to on the second, third floor are in a little knuckle on the inside corner. Exterior wall on the second, third floor.
Okay, so it's not gonna be the same residential layout on the first floor as on the second and third?
No, it's unique on the first floor.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So I think that, you know, it's, it's important that, and I think you're hitting, hanging in, the, the, the computer room, the la- you know, the other amenities for the tenant are not part of the commercial space on the first floor. There, there are other areas within the building.
Okay. And just to go back about the ratio of the sixty, forty, thirty, I think to touch on Commissioner Turquist's point, we all would love to see a hundred percent of at least that sixty percent AMI. But understandably, you need to get that, the, the scoring so you can qualify for, for the credits. In lieu of adding any market-rate apartments, in the pilot agreement that we were reviewing earlier this year, in, in that agreement, there was a clause that you would commit a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to market-rate investments elsewhere in our city. to market rate investments elsewhere in our city. That would be coming to the city so we could invest it in market rate apartments. Is that something that you still plan on doing in this pilot agreement? If you don't find a way to add any market rate apartments to the project?
We were hoping to meet that, that objective by adding the commercial space. And we thought that was, was a better way to do it in terms of, for various reasons.
Okay. And I just, I guess would conclude to echo Commissioner Renssman's point about the pilot having very similar terms to the last one. You indicated five percent, which would be the four percent plus. We had the one percent essential services fee included. So if we aren't including that one percent essential service fee, then yeah, I think we would need at least five percent on the pilot to move forward with this project. I would very much like to see market rate apartments in there, if possible at all. And if not, I know we would welcome some investment in market rate opportunities elsewhere. There certainly is demand for that. But again, I want to thank you for coming back with this proposal, working with city staff on it and giving very deliberate and careful consideration of investing in Muskegon. I think this is an excellent addition to our downtown and will help prompt further development in our downtown. And I appreciate inclusion of underground parking there as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have mentioned this earlier. And, but just of the eighteen hundred square feet of the commercial retail space where Mr. Boucher was going over that, I guess I thought that it extended higher, so I'm looking at it closer. And if it's eighteen hundred square feet, you mentioned earlier tangledwood plus another possibly retail tenant. So would tangledwood take up all that space or would there be, or is that not decided or?
No, what we're prepared to commit, commit to or proposing is that eighteen hundred square feet is sort of spec commercial space for, for commercial or retail tenants.
Okay.
In addition to that eighteen hundred square feet is another space for tangledwood, which, which right now is roughly, you know, three, four thousand feet.
Okay, and would not be necessary, wouldn't be in that area at all?
No, no, it is. It's all, it's all of that, it's all on that corner.
It's on that corner? But it's not on the second or third floor?
No.
It's, it's on the first floor?
It's all first floor commercial.
So it's about whatever that totals?
Fifty-seven hundred, fifty-eight hundred.
Is on that first floor?
It's on that hard corner.
Okay, all right. I just, I just wanted to make sure because I got confused and thought eighteen hundred was the total and that would leave, if tangledwood, there wouldn't be but a hundred square feet for someone to run?
Mr. Mayor, just if I may interrupt, the clerk has said that she's getting information that we're hard to hear. So we need to make sure our microphones are a little closer and that we're speaking into them. Thank you.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Anything else, commissioners? I guess if, no, Byron, you've given your reservations. I think that we have some concurrence here that we should proceed with discussions as well as you. Josh, I also want to commend your working with staff and taking the concerns and considerations to heart in coming back with what I feel is a quality project. Quite impressed with being able to bring in that commercial element, most certainly. And it's, I think it's quite exciting that we have a project, the first one out of the gate, to work with our form-based code. So I also would be supportive of moving forward into negotiations. So I think we have the numbers here this evening to do that. So I wish you best of luck and hopefully we can get through good negotiations to come back with a final product that will sit here and tear you apart again and go through it all over again.
It's part, it's part of the process.
Okay.
I appreciate, thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Item B, please.
West Michigan Lake Hawks City Manager, summer request to authorize staff to support the West Michigan Lake Hawks as follows. Purchasing fifty tickets to each of the eight home games to be played at Muskegon High School and to provide those tickets to youth-related community organizations. The video broadcasting of all eight games hosted at Muskegon High School. Advertising the Watch Muskegon campaign on game uniforms, practice uniforms and warmups. Staff recommendation to authorize city staff to participate in the Lake Hawks 2015-2016 season as presented.
How do we handle this? We need a motion. Commissioner Johnson?
I move to authorize city staff to participate in the Lake Hawks 2015-2016 season as presented, including budgeting up to seventy-one hundred dollars.
Report?
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Renssman-Savinga to authorize staff to participate in the Lake Hawks 2015-2016 season as presented. Questions?
Vice Mayor?
Just, it's good to see that this organization continues to grow and thrive. I think they've become a real asset to our community and I'm pleased to support them. And I'm hopeful that the money can be found. I know the county's working on it so we can get a hardwood floor in the arena so that they can have a permanent home at some point, so happy to do this.
Very good.
Meanwhile, just to follow up on that, I am happy to see that they are playing more games at Muskegon High School this year. So we're up to a total of eight games, so that's, that's nice to see. But I definitely support the sentiment that the vice mayor indicated of getting them a permanent home in LC Walker Arena, that would be fantastic.
Okay, I was just going to say, they are adding, adding to their total number of games. I think they're going to play thirty total games, eight at Muskegon High, eight at Reese Puffer and then they aren't going to play any, they played, last remember they played some in Grand Haven and Spring Lake and other places, they're going to play them all and at Muskegon High and all that, and then at Reese Puffer.
Very good. Anything else, commissioners?
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssman-Savinga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item C, please?
LC Walker Arena City Manager, summer request to authorize staff to hire Tim Taylor as the executive, chief executive officer of the LC Walker Arena at a salary not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually. Staff recommendation to authorize city staff to complete the hire and negotiate a contract with Tim Taylor.
I move to authorize city staff to complete the hire and negotiate a contract with Tim Taylor.
Second. Do I have to say both your names? It has been moved by Commissioner Renssman-Savinga, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to authorize city staff to complete the hire and negotiate a contract with Tim Taylor. Questions?
Now this was, has been handled by somebody from the lumberjacks up until this last season. And they want to give up the management of the, of the arena. Which we had for a few years. I'm wondering, is Tim Taylor here, is that?
No, he isn't here.
I'd like to know a little bit about Tim Taylor, what responsibilities he will have, a job description. Other than managing the building, when he has to repair the building, where is he getting those resources? Does he have a budget to repair things and board outdoors and things like that? Is he going to be a marketing manager in addition to managing the building? I'd like to know a little bit more about that. And the seventy-five thousand dollar package is seventy-five thousand base salary plus fringe benefits. Where are we at?
Well, it is, I'll answer that question, it is just a base salary. We are working on the details and that's why you don't have a contract in front of you. We're trying to decide exactly how we want to compensate him over the long term. But, well, we're not asking him to manage it in the same way that, that say the lumberjacks used to manage it where they take like a management fee and that have their own expenses and things like that. Really, he's going to operate more like an employee or a department head type of a person that, that reports back to us, that runs their, the revenues through us and the expenses back through us. So they'll have a budget like any other department has a budget. They're more managing the personnel and the activities there for us versus having a large management agreement where they're, where they're responsible for all those things out of their own dime. If that makes any sense, it is a little bit different, he's more like one person managing our asset.
I'd like to know what's his background? Who's he going to report to, directly to you or someone else in the administration?
He's the person that we have in charge of the LC Walker Arena. His background is, he's actually been involved in the arena in the past under different iterations of management. Not so much with the current, with the group that just ended their management cycle, but the groups before them. He acted kind of as, as a general manager of the arena in the past. So he was responsible for gaining sponsorships, selling, you know, doing corporate sales, helping to manage like the flow of the arena as far as, as far as managing, how different events correspond with the hockey and how they interplay with one another. And he'll be doing those exact same things for us. So he'll be managing the different lease agreements that we have. So helping manage the arrangement that we have with the, with the lumberjacks, for example, determining what costs they have related to food and beverage and how their sponsorships work with our sponsorships and how those sponsorships that maybe are related to the arena versus the team and things like that. Also be coordinating and attempting to get new leases, new, new events, things like concerts and other ice and non-ice related sports activities and things like that. So he'll be essentially being tasked with managing all aspects of the arena. And there are other staff people there too, so he wouldn't be the only one. We do have, we do have a facility manager and then a number of people that do like cleaning the ice, you know, riding the Zamboni, organizing ice time and things like that too. So it's not a one man show per se.
We were subsidizing the lumberjacks to X amount of dollars, which was pretty healthy. That upon not going to the lumberjacks, is that going to be part of this budget or?
Yep, so we'll run it just like-
Is it new money or is it some money that's already in there?
There's, there's a little bit of new money, it's definitely going to be different than the way it was run in the past. So before we were giving the two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand and then the one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand to the lumberjacks and they were managing it. We're not giving those dollars to this individual, we're hiring him to manage it and those dollars will go into, into our, into our budget to manage the arena. In addition to that, whereas all of the other renters before would have went to the, to the management companies, all those rents will come to us. So the dollars we make off our lease agreement with the lumberjacks, the dollar we make with the, with the junior jacks, with Norton Shore's recreational hockey league and with Reese Puffer's varsity high school soccer team, all those revenues will again come into that pot of money that we'll manage and we'll use to cover the fees related with, you know, the fees and costs associated with the arena. In addition to that, anything we rented out, like for example, we're having a, a couple soccer games planned later this year and eventually we'll have the arena football there, all that stuff will come into us and he'll just be tasked with actually being our personnel managing that asset for us. So none of the dollars will go to him, none of the expenses will be on him, they'll all be ours.
The benefits that we will pay him be similar to other department heads within the city?
No, we haven't really talked about fringe benefits per se. I don't think that we necessarily going to have fringe benefits for him that are, that are like that. The, the point we're at with the contract really is the benefits are more along the lines of more like sales commissions. For example, if he brings it to a solvency point, then he would get some sort of, some sort of a bonus. If he brought it to a point where it was making money or bringing in money for us, he might get a little bit more. So the fringe benefits are more like cash benefits if there's a positive performance at the, at the arena, which for us has been operating a negative for so long, we thought the best way thing to do was to incentivize him to bring it into a positive cash flow situation and incentivize that with cash versus incentivizing-
Pension benefits built in there?
No, at this point, no, we haven't discussed that.
On his wages, would we be withholding social security?
No, at this point, we're talking about bringing him on as like a contract employee, as in he'll, he'll run it, he'll be, he is an LLC essentially who would, who would work for us in that capacity. Maybe John can explain that better. We didn't want to bring him in through the normal hiring process. There were just some things in there that just, they didn't make sense for us to do it that way.
I, I think it's a great job for the right person.
We're, we're confident, we had a number of, you want to imagine the number of hiccups that you could have making this transition from figuring out who, you know, just today Derek dealing with liquor liability and insurance and who's going to do this and who's going to do that and how we're going to schedule Reese Puffer versus Norton Shore's rec league versus the lumberjacks versus the speed skaters. And, and it really takes somebody who knows what they're doing because a lot of those things, even in the short two-month period up until the point that we brought him on, they were slipping through the cracks and we had no idea that they were even slipping through the cracks. And it just really took having somebody there that knows what they're doing. And I know we've tried to say, let's move away from being a hockey arena and being more of a multi-use arena. But the reality is this time of year, we really need somebody that understands hockey and ice time and how those things work together. And then it also has those other abilities. And I'll give you an example of that. Every time, for example, we have, even though it's a, it's a good idea, we want to do a football game or a soccer game there, we need somebody to help us understand, okay, wait a minute, how much ice time were we probably going to rent on that day? How do we displace this rec league and where do we put them and how does that affect rentals on the other days? And then how much is it going to cost to, to roll out the turf and have it there and coordinate people and get them there and things like that? And some of the things that he's helped us understand are if we want to have a soccer game, the, between the dollars we lose and the cost that we, that it costs to roll that out is a significant number and we just need to understand what that dollar is and then how we move, how moving that day, that, that soccer game one week or one month or, or two or three weeks in one direction or the other could actually save us a significant amount of money versus picking a day just because the lumberjacks might be out of town in December, there's a lot more going into it. And I think we were looking at it, at least I was looking at it a little more simplistically than what he's been able to look at it at. And I think we'll benefit greatly by having him there.
So as a contract employee, be kind of an at-will thing?
Yeah, and my guess is we'll have some sort of a term on the contract. That might be one year or two years or whatever it is. But there will be probably, if you, if you trust John any, there will be language in there that allows us out of it if we need to get out of it if they're not, if they're not performing.
Because I think that this is a very much a, you know, that's usually what you use a contractor for is, and I think in this situation, we're new to this and we need to, you know, I guess for, the bogey is the two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars we used to be paying the other company. You know, it's just dollars and cents, so what other, is he going to need, what other staff, administrative staff will there be? Will there be a marketing person? I know that, and it's confusing because I know the lumberjacks will have their own marketing people and before they kind of used to use them in multiple ways, but that's going to be different now, so.
So there's a couple of different dynamics to that. He will be doing some marketing and a lot of what he'll be doing is focusing on, on marketing locally, you know, networking and, and getting sponsorships with one of the people and the relationships he's already forged being involved in, in this sort of business in Muskegon for so many years. But we'll also have, the county's committed to hiring a marketing person through accommodations tax funds. And so that person will be specifically taxed with, with finding users for the facility that will create hotel room overnight stays. So they'll be trying to attract maybe volleyball tournaments or other tournaments, other things, sports related that could happen outside of the hockey season. So they'll be working in tandem to kind of do those sorts of things. Whereas I think Tim's focus will be a little bit more on, on gaining sponsorships and things like that to help us offset costs for different events. These people will be focused on bringing in sports related stuff and then Tim will also focus on bringing in non-sport related things like concerts and, and other uses for the arena during the non-hockey season.
Yeah, and I guess that would be one of my other concern. And I know Tim and I think he's done a great job for the lumberjacks teams that he served. I think he is mostly a hockey person, so, and I understand, you know, also we need someone who understands hockey, but, you know, hopefully we can evaluate how well he's doing in terms of bringing in some of those other things that are not hockey really, which I think we've all determined are something that we really need to get to that solvency.
And I think the key was kind of severing him from the hockey team relationship. I think Tim all along has been a hockey person, but also he's been a big advocate for the facility. The problem was he always worked for a hockey team, so, you know, you're, 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 obviously that's where his, where his mind was focused on taking care of the team. Now that we've, we've brought him away from, you know, direct affiliation with the team, we can see pretty clearly now that he's got the arenas, he was able to shift pretty quickly into focusing on the best interest of the arena. But in addition to him, we do still have Neil there who's been there for, I think, thirty-plus years, you know, managing the facility from a maintenance standpoint. And then there's also Rob Willie, who is kind of our food and beverage person there, so manages the concessions and things like that. And then Nigel, who is another full-time employee who works there doing facility-related activities to maintenance types of things. Oh, well, right now we're running him through a staffing agency, but ultimately there are responsibility and we're trying to determine if it makes sense to keep him with a staffing agency, move to a different staffing agency. with a staffing agency, move to a different staffing agency, have Tim maybe employ, not all the options. We moved him to a staffing agency immediately, because we needed to find a way to get him on payroll and things like that. So that's kind of a question that we're still trying to figure out, what is the most cost-effective way to employ them?
And Tim will have a supervisory role over those staff?
Correct, yep.
Given that he's been working in good faith for the past few months at the arena, are we looking at making his contract retroactive and paying him back pay, or are we looking at it starting, you know, now or in the near future?
Correct.
And this is going to be a salary going forward?
Yeah, ultimately, I would like to get him paid for the month of August. You know, he's been there really for, he started, I think, in, you know, at the end of July for us, because we needed him right away, with the idea of, we're going to get a contract worked out, and it's just taken us a lot longer than we thought to get the contract kind of, kind of figured out. So the goal was for me to bring this to you guys and showing a good faith to him, that we do intend to hire him while we work out the details of the contract.
Very good. Anything else?
Because, no, we haven't paid him, we haven't paid him yet, so he's been there for six-plus weeks.
Been providing a sack lunch and a bottle of water.
No, we haven't even-
Oh, we haven't?
No, he gets his own lunch, too.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsamasibika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business commissioners? Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, Commissioner Rinsamasavenga, take us home.
Sure. Commissioner Hood is missing. I talked to him earlier today, I think he's recuperated.
Yes.
So hopefully, he will be with us soon. But I make a move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Rinsamasavenga, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, everyone have a good evening, and thank you for coming out. Thank you, Reverend.
It's great to see you.